All right, I'm going to call this March 2nd. Samamish Planning Commission meeting to order. We are at full strength. Welcome, everyone. Let's start out with roll call. Carrie Bosworth.
Present.
Mike Bresko.
I'm here.
John Bachman.
Here.
Sayed Safavian.
Here.
Mark Baughman, which is me, I am here. Wasim Fayad.
Here.
And we are welcoming our number seven, which is great. Now bringing us back to full strength. Ajay Chakrabani. Did I get that pretty close, Ajay?
Yes, you did.
Could you just take a second and introduce yourself?
Yes, thank you so much, Chair. My name is Ajay Chakrabani. I am very happy and excited, as excited, and I've been telling that to the team here, that I'm as excited as a kid in Disneyland with an ice cream in his hand to be in this planning commission and look forward to great meetings here and to serving out my term. Thank you so much for having me.
Great, welcome. Julian, let's read the meeting accessibility statement.
The public is welcome to attend Planning Commission meetings in person at City Hall, 801 228th Avenue Southeast, or virtually through Zoom. In accordance with the latest public health guidance, masks are recommended but not required for in-person attendance. Public comments: Each speaker is allowed up to three minutes for non-agenda comment, five minutes of representing an organization, and seven minutes for agenda public comment. For those providing comments through Zoom, once you have dialed into the meeting, please virtually raise your hand to indicate you would like to provide public comment. Your mic will remain muted until you are called upon during the public comment period. To get public comment via Zoom, join the webinar via the link https://us06web.zoom.us/j/82822648794. To get public comment via mobile or landline telephone, dial the following number: US+1-253-215-8782. Webinar ID: 82822648794.
Thank you, Julian. Next, approval of the agenda. This evening's agenda main item is a discussion about our latest iteration of the draft Housing Action Plan, or HAP. Anybody have any comments about the agenda for this evening? Okay, don't see any comments, so we'll call the agenda approved by common consent. Next is approval of the meeting minutes from our last meeting, which was our February 16th meeting. Does anyone have any comments or corrections from the meeting minutes from that meeting? I don't see anybody with any comments or corrections, so we'll call the February 16th meeting minutes approved. Next is non-agenda public comment. Do we have anybody for non-agenda public comment this evening? If we're in the room, go ahead and step up to the podium. It's been a while since we've had people, actually multiple people, in the room wanting to make public comments, so we're a little rusty at this.
It's warmer here than it is at home. My name's Mary Victor, and I have lived in Samamish 22 years. Just a couple things. When we started the vision statement in 2019, I had gone on the Internet and Googled, you know, community, build community, how to build community, and I had stumbled across those cards called "How to Build Community" from Syracuse Cultural Workers in New York. And there's a nice graphic, and I had passed them out to all of you, and then we've replaced a few of the planning commissions. So I did it in 2019, and everybody had liked it. And then I've done it recently with welcoming Ajay and Sayed and Wasim. I also gave them a copy. The message here is sometimes something so remarkable happens that you need to remark about it. And the reason that I really like those materials is like, look up when you're walking, talk to the mail carrier, turn up the music, you know, bake cookies and share, those type of things. There's something anybody can do. We can make a change today. And while you're called the Planning Commission, a lot of the things that you work on now, they'll affect the future, but we're to the point in these next two years, 2023 and 2024, that we really need to be doing a lot of things. So like on climate change, we don't have to wait till the climate plan is identified, adopted, a consultant is assigned, and eventually it says what we need to start saying and doing things that people can actually do that can make a difference now. I mean, children can help, older people can help, you know, that just can be happening. So I guess my message is it's time for action. Like every time we think about things or we see these reports come through, these things are going to get adopted really quickly, and we need to make sure that we've gotten public comment and the public comment that's been given has been incorporated. And then we need you guys' feedback and the council's feedback and anybody else that puts in. I'll also tell you that talking for three minutes is pretty hard. Listening for three minutes is probably even harder, sorry about that. But I've listened to, I've been an advocate since I was a child on things, and I've been advocating for seven years, and I will tell you this, it's really important to listen when people talk. Sometimes you don't like it, you don't agree, maybe they say it in an offensive way or with a lot of emotion, or they're angry. But sometimes there's one word, or there's one concept, or there's something, and if you key into that, go ahead and scribble it down while people are talking. And if you bring it up in a meeting, it has more chance to get to staff, get in those matrices, and get pulled forward. So I usually give this lecture about once a year because a lot of people said that's really good input. Like you don't have to like everything I say, but I might say something like, we need to take action, we need to be thinking things we can do now. And if you remember that, I know that you guys have really great questions and you talk about it, but those are the things that we need to focus on. So as a general public comment, the new thing is learn to use that new website. I couldn't even find the meeting on it.
Thanks, Mary. By the way, I couldn't find it at the beginning either.
Good evening, Planning Commissioners. Paul Stickney, Samamish. Welcome, Ajay and other new commission members. I've said hi over the phone, but I decided to come in tonight. And by the way, I first thought Ajay had the wrong name in front of him because it said Scott McCall, and then I realized all of you have got council placards, and I think the city should and could print name tags for Planning Commission meetings so people at home have the right names. Also, I'd like to put in a plug that I don't like the flashing red light coming up here. I came to City Hall a couple weeks ago to talk to City Council on the 21st on their work plan, and that red light flashing really did keep a lot of people backed up trying to get up the hill. So I think with our traffic engineer, we should put an ear into City Council to see if they can get the ITS system or whatever it is that is working out there to have it be red, yellow, and green, especially on nights of our meetings. Onto a couple topics that are non-agenda. The February 21st meeting of City Council was a lot of discussion about work plan, objectives, and goals. Suggest you watch that if possible. As a could, not a should, because I'm not a person, I may be passionate and be certain in some of the things that I am asserting and advocating for, but I never try to force. But I would suggest that you take a hard look at some meetings going back to about September on and off. Take a look at some City Council agendas, some Planning Commission agendas. And for those of you who do not know, there's a tremendous resource on the city website called the Civic Web. And like Mary, I had to look for that. I found it now under your government city clerk, and under there, there's this thing about attaching official city docs. So it's not easy, but what's cool is when you go there, under supplemental materials for meetings, for the last four years, you can break City Council meetings and Planning Commission meetings out, and by folders, by date. That's not where you get meeting agendas, it's not where you see videos, it's where you see staff presentations, sign-in sheets, and written public comments that were submitted for those meetings. So there's a lot of good stuff there. We'll talk more after we see how all the conversations go tonight. Okay, bye.
Thanks, Paul. I can foresee the website, new website, becoming a theme here for a little bit. Julian, do we have anybody online?
We have no hands raised online.
Okay, great. Thanks for the non-agenda public comment. Let's move on to our main topic for this evening, which, as I mentioned earlier, was another review of our current state of our housing action plan. And I believe maybe Jackie is going to introduce this this evening.
Yes, this one is going to be me. Good evening, Planning Commissioners. My name is Jackie Bolleal, and I'm a management analyst in the Department of Community Development and also the project manager for the Housing Action Plan. Give me just one moment to share my screen here. Hopefully you can see what I see here.
Yes, it's working, Jackie.
So again, thank you all for being here tonight. I am joined today, unfortunately, our lead consultant Elliot is unavailable this evening, so instead we are joined by Madalena Kalin, who is part of Elliot's team at Community Attributes Inc., and Bob Begford, who is from our subconsultant team at Makers Architecture Planning, Urban, and Design. And I will hand it over to them in a few minutes. So tonight, we're going to be reviewing the draft Housing Action Plan, but we wanted to start first with a quick summary of the project and where we are in the process. The city received a grant from the Department of Commerce in late 2021 to create a Housing Action Plan. The Housing Action Plan aims to encourage additional affordable and market-rate housing in a variety of housing types at prices accessible to a broad range of incomes. Per the grant requirements, the city is responsible for submitting a public engagement plan, a housing needs assessment, and a draft and final Housing Action Plan. And the final Housing Action Plan must be adopted in June 2023. So this graphic is very exciting because it shows that we are getting close to the end of the project here. So we brought the Housing Needs Assessment to Planning Commission and Council last fall and began to identify the tools and strategies to address the results of the assessment, which were then brought to the public through a public engagement event in December, and then to Council and Planning Commission in January. After receiving feedback and direction from the Council and Planning Commission, our team at CAI has created the Draft Housing Action Plan, which was included in the agenda packet for tonight's meeting. So hopefully you've all had a chance to look through that. Looking forward, we will be back in April, on April 6th, for a public hearing before beginning the review process with the Council on May 9th and a public hearing scheduled for June 6th. It's very important for the Housing Action Plan to complement and align with the other policy work that's being done at the city. So for this, the staff and our consultants for the comprehensive plan update and the Climate Action Plan are all working together so that we're reviewing each other's materials. And the HAP has to be adopted in June while the Climate Action Plan and updates, the comp plan, are still underway. So those projects, once they're finalized and adopted, we will likely be able to revisit the HAP to see if any adjustments need to be made and to make sure everything aligns. Just before I hand it over to Madalena, I just wanted to remind the Commissioners, we provided a comment matrix to note any questions or notes you have as you review the draft and after tonight's meeting. If you need the link, let me know. But please feel free to reach out to me if you have any questions, but we'd like to get those comments back by March 8th. So just wanted to put that reminder out there. I can hand it over to Madalena. I can keep navigating if you'd like, Madalena.
Sure, that works. Thank you, Jackie. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having us tonight. I'm Madalena Kalin. I'm a senior economist with Community Attributes, and as Jackie mentioned, I'm subbing for my colleague Elliot, who has been project manager and lead for the Housing Action Plan for the City of Samamish. So tonight, the presentation is aimed to provide an overview of the plan and how to use this document and what kind of guide you through the contents and what's included. And then hopefully we'll be able to address your questions and have some good discussion. So the action plan contains three main elements. The action plan itself, which includes tools and strategies that respond to the needs identified through the Housing Needs Assessment, that was something that was presented to Planning Commission and Council in previous meetings, and community outreach, including a statistically significant survey that we conducted. The strategies included in the Housing Action Plan build on the city's existing efforts to expand housing options. The monitoring plan is the second element. The monitoring plan will help the city monitor and track the impact and the progress of strategies implemented, and I will talk a little bit more in detail about that in later slides. And then appendices, which include all the work that was done to support the development of the Housing Action Plan. Next slide, please. So an overview of the structure of the action plan, each strategy is formatted in a similar way and has kind of, in terms of the parts of the strategy, there's a strategy overview. So each strategy starts with a short description. I'd like to take a moment here to talk a little bit about the process for developing the list of strategies. I think just to give a little more context and maybe like a reminder of the steps that we went through in order to develop the list of strategies that made it into the action plan. So we pulled together a fairly exhaustive preliminary list of potential strategies, kind of an all-available toolbox based on findings from the HNA and the community survey. Part of that was based on what is statutorily enabled in Washington State and what a city is allowed to do. The list was shared with the public at community engagement events and key stakeholders for input. We did workshops with city staff to further narrow down that list and refine it further based on your feedback, feedback from city staff and city council. So when selecting the strategies, we can say that several criteria were considered by city staff and the consultant team, and that includes alignment with the staff work program, the fit for Samamish based on local conditions. Public or stakeholder support was a big input into, so based on the survey data and participation in the public meetings that we did, and then we also looked at potential impact of any given strategy. The strategies are tied to what we call the strategic themes. There's four relevant themes that were identified from the Housing Needs Assessment as well as the community outreach, and these themes connect the strategies to the housing gaps and needs identified for the city. The housing requirements theme refers to satisfying the requirements of planning for housing under GMA as amended by Housing Bill 1220. The Housing Action Plan includes strategies aimed to support Samamish to plan for and accommodate housing accessible to all income levels as required by HB 1220. Workforce housing, the HNA found that workers in Samamish who live in other cities throughout the region are more likely than Samamish residents to earn below the city's median household income, and Samamish housing prices may therefore be unattainable to a large share of Samamish workers. The survey responses from residents also supported the finding that Samamish low and middle-wage workers are finding it increasingly difficult to access housing in the city. So strategies that are related to this theme aim to increase housing opportunities for Samamish workers. The third theme is changing demographics. Again, this is based on findings from the HNA related to Samamish residents' population aging more rapidly than King County residents. Survey responses indicated an increasing need for housing appropriate for aging residents and empty nesters, as well as multi-generational households and college students returning to Samamish. So strategies that are focusing on accommodating these changing demographics will need to include housing repair and preservation, as well as programs for aging in place that modify homes for multi-generational households. Lastly, a sense of place. This theme was identified through community outreach and focuses on promoting smart growth strategies that ensure future development aligns with the city's identity and future needs. So across the plan, each strategy will indicate which of these themes they relate to. Other sections contained in each strategy include opportunities for Samamish, so potential ways the strategy can be shaped, modified, or we call these also actions, so ways in which the city can change or implement the strategy in question. And then housing strategy tiers. So we've identified three tiers based on several criteria, including resources that are required for implementation, time that's needed for completion, staff capacity, and potential impact on housing supply. I would say that the resources and staff time required for implementation were weighted more heavily than other criteria in determining how each strategy fits into these tiers. So Tier 1 is kind of a high-priority actions that the city can begin implementing in coordination with the comprehensive plan update that's for 2024. These strategies will probably require minimal resources and can be easily accommodated in future work plans. Tier 2 will require some time to begin implementation because they're reliant on completion of zoning amendments or maybe other strategies from Tier 1. And then Tier 3 would require long-term planning, or they may be contingent on completion of the 2024 comprehensive plan update. Next slide, please. We also looked at impact of each strategy, and there's three icons that show up for each strategy throughout the plan that signify the impact in terms of the type of units produced, the quantity, and the level of affordability. This was the type of units, just to go through, what you're seeing there in that icon is single-family detached ADUs. For middle housing types, we have duplex, cottage housing, townhouses, and low-rise multifamily. And then the multifamily, the last category, includes mid and high-rise multifamily. The quantity goes from low to high, and this was, I will say that this wasn't based on a scientific quantitative process, but it was derived through developer interviews. We ran through the feasibility and compatibility of different housing typologies with the development history and land use capacity, and assessed what's realistic in different areas of the city that could occur. And I will say that most of the capacity for new multifamily units is in town center, but given that that's a fairly small area, there's some, it's more realistic that developers will look on the fridges of town center and in other commercial areas of the city. There's also a geographic focus, so this provides more detail on the location in Samamish and which strategies are likely to be most useful. Next slide, please. The other elements showed for each strategy include sample jurisdiction. So we did a best practices review for the strategies included in the Housing Action Plan and looked at examples of other cities that have implemented or counties in Washington that have implemented strategies similar to the ones that are being proposed. And then the section that's additional planning alignment, it outlines sort of climate considerations related to the city's upcoming Climate Action Plan, and then transportation considerations in relation to the city's current transportation infrastructure and capacity and current planning efforts. The types of interventions are further classified into four different types. The programmatic, the strategy requires modification of or creation of a new program. Partnership, it requires utilization or creation of existing partnership or creation of new partnerships. Regulatory, it requires an amendment to the zoning code. And other, which means the strategy is neither of the above. Next slide, please. So the second element of the plan, the monitoring plan, which also includes a matrix, the purpose of the monitoring plan is to help the city monitor and evaluate the impact of the strategies. There's several criteria, well, I would say there's several metrics that the city can track to identify the impact and progress towards each strategic intervention, and those are the housing type, the affordability level, the program, the geography, and the partner. Next slide, please. Lastly, the appendices. As I mentioned, this is a summary of all the work that's been done that supports the strategies from the Housing Action Plan. The addendum to the Housing Needs Assessment includes our responses to feedback that we received on the Housing Needs Assessment from the Planning Commission and City Council, the full Housing Needs Assessment document that was presented to you previously, survey results, and a summary of stakeholder engagement for this project.
We put up on screen the discussion questions that were included in the agenda packet, and these questions were intended to just kind of get your conversation started, and we're happy to take any other questions you may have. The questions were, do you have any questions about the Housing Action Plan? Are there any sections of the Housing Action Plan where you think further clarification is needed? And is there anything missing from the Housing Action Plan to facilitate its successful
Okay, thank you. Before we jump into this, can I ask, is there anything more that you're going to be presenting later, or is this all discussion and questions from us from here on out?
This is the end of our presentation. I do have Miriam standing by. She does have the PDF of the Draft Housing Action Plan so that she, if you guys have any specific questions, she can try to pull it up on screen, but this is all that we have to present. So the rest is in your hands.
I guess I'm looking to the Commissioners for input here, but it seems like maybe we need to put a little structure around this as we have our discussion. We could just leave it wide open, but that could be a little chaotic with as much as there is here. So I'm going to make a suggestion, and I guess I'll look for head nods or people throwing things over here at me. Maybe we can walk through this kind of in the order that the plan is put together and just start out with kind of the overview and then walk through the strategies and maybe put our comments and questions according to each strategy so there's some consistency. Does anybody have any other suggestions, or would that work? Go ahead, Sayed.
Mr. Chair, I have quite a number of questions, mostly have to do with the assumptions that went to the plan, so I don't know at what time we should be talking about those and answering my questions about. about certain number of assumptions and that the consultants used to put the plan together.
Are they organized according to the strategies, or are they sort of general?
Mostly general, but I can make reference to the page number and then some of the graphics, and I have questions about those assumptions.
So let's do kind of an overall view, and then maybe we'll see where we get with that, and then maybe we can hit on some of the specific strategies. I know at least some of my comments are based on each strategy. I thought maybe some people might have similar ones.
Just a quick question. With regard to the comments that we put in the spreadsheet, is this something we will discuss now, or is this going to be discussed over email or in other forums?
Yeah, I'll suggest something, and then I guess I'd look to the staff to comment on that, Miriam or Jackie or whoever. I think that the matrix, the Excel sheet with all the questions in it, is a good collector for all of the questions. And then probably I would suggest if you, I mean, I don't think we need to go through grammar corrections and those sorts of things here, obviously, but somewhere between major comments and grammar corrections, you'll have to kind of decide what we should bring up in the meeting and what we can leave to the sheet itself. Miriam or Jackie or anybody else, I guess, does that seem reasonable?
That seems reasonable. I was going to say we'll be, staff will be sorting through that sheet. We've already looked through it, but we'll continue to look through it. And then on the eighth one, we have our deadline, we'll review it, we'll integrate any changes into the draft, but we'll also respond back to each item and send that out to the Planning Commission, so you can see our responses too.
Okay. So I might just add, for the comments like that you put in, if there's some that would be helpful to share with the public, or if you would expect kind of maybe a clarification, then that would be certainly something to bring up. If it's more about, you know, change wording or certainly any typos, then I don't think, I wouldn't bring those up. And then one other thing, I do think that there's probably some overall, like anything missing doesn't necessarily fit perfectly into the strategies. It might be something that's kind of more overarching that we might want to touch on either at the beginning or the end.
It'll be just like wading into the lake where you can't see the bottom. You don't really know what you're going to find until you get out of ways. Okay, let's start with sort of general questions and comments, kind of that are overall, maybe not strategy-specific. So let's start down on that end. Ajay, go ahead.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a question, as a general question. In one of your strategies, you had like demographics being brought up. Let me talk to you about a hypothetical situation that we suddenly get a lot of young people moving into Sammamish as the demographic changes towards that, their needs, like, let's take an easy example of electric vehicles, an electric vehicle charging and things like that. I was hoping that, is the Housing Action Plan going to consider those spawning points? Because they are not directly related to housing. They are related to something about housing, something related to housing, but not exactly on housing. Would that become part of your Housing Action Plan strategy as well? Or would that have to be handled somewhere else? Where do you see the bounds of this? How do I take the bounds of this whole app that you're bringing forward?
I think the purpose of the Housing Action Plan, when it's specifically to address the housing needs and gaps that were identified in relation to what the current residents and future residents of Sammamish, people that perhaps don't live in the city but would like to live in the city, or people that work in the city but don't currently live in the city. What do they need in terms of housing? What are the different types of houses and the quantity that's required with relation to the housing target? And then helping the city plan for housing allocations as directed by HB 1220. So I don't know if that answers your questions, but that's kind of the bounds of the plan. So I see Miriam unmuted.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I think that will be a good component to talk about as we get into our Climate Action Plan. I think we'll be looking a lot about electrical vehicle charging, how to reduce greenhouse gases and things like that. And that will in turn also play into some of our updates to the comprehensive plan, which will then go into looking at our development regulations, and that's where you would start to see some of those get woven into the things that you'll see on the ground, how the housing gets built, what it contains.
Got it.
David, you have anything to add?
No, actually, you clarified a point for me. You basically said that, consider this or read this like a dwelling plan. Do not look at it as things that spawn out of the dwelling that will become part of the plan. That'll get handled somewhere else. Am I right in that understanding?
Yes.
Okay, got it. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I'm going to go down the line here, Raseem. Unless you want to pass.
My comments, sorry, my comments, I already had them in the spreadsheet, and I think we'll wait to hear back from them on those. Yeah, I would like to skip.
Mike?
I was counting on having more time to prepare, no. I have, if I could, there's two that are, I think, slightly related. And one is, it's really about, like, this is a plan that doesn't have who and when and the budget. So when I think about, like, there are the three major elements. There was the actions, and then sort of the tracking and the appendices. I kind of view this as, here's the strategies, there's the descriptions of the strategies that are rated as high priority. And I almost want to see at least a rough outline of kind of what the implementation plan would look like. Because this is a plan, like I said, without having like the who by when type of a thing. And then the second part related to that is, I understand, you know, there's the high, medium, or low, medium, high in terms of the potential housing units that could come from each of the strategies. It would be nice to then see, and I know this is tough because it's up to developers and all, but kind of a low to a high range for each of those in what we might actually see implemented, and how that all adds up. Because a key question is, when this plan gets put into place over the next several years, are we going to be able to accomplish the goals that have been set in front of us? And I really, I can't tell. So if there's some things that can get put into that that can make that a little bit clearer, or maybe that sets, you know, into more of the comprehensive plan or later on, at least we need that clarified, whether that should be an output on the app or comes later. So that's my comment.
Since we're going down the line, I'll add just my couple of small ones, and these are going to be, you're going to probably think that these are too specific, but under Tier One and under the Action Plan, kind of overall, what I call the instructions, it, there's a word, there's a phrase here that says, under Tier One, "These strategies are unlikely to require a budget." And I really encourage that the language be a little clearer there, mostly because there are people in the community that will focus particularly on budget, and I think it's important to be clear what you mean there, which I think is, will not require additional budget. And so just say that to make sure that it's clear. And again, another kind of very narrow-focused one, but throughout here, we talk about transportation, and there's some discussion about locating things, or the strategy may help locate things close to transportation options, whether that's public transit or whatever. And I pointed out in one of the comments that I submitted, but I think it's important to note that we actually don't have a ton of that in the city right now, but we could have more in the future. And so not to just focus on what's currently today, a transit option or a, you know, a location, should also, the plan should also acknowledge that part of our strategy is going to be, to try to improve that in the future. I think it's a small thing, but for some people, it's a really kind of an important thing. So those are really just my two kind of overarching, super small comments. So I'll move on to Carrie.
Hello, good evening. Before I ask a question, I just want to make a quick statement. I was shopping in the city this weekend, and I was, I loved hearing, I was chatting with someone there, and they said that they had walked to work that morning. So I was very excited that I was shopping in Sammamish and someone said they had walked to work. I wanted to ask a quick question on the graphics. So for each strategy, just to make sure I'm reading this correctly, if, for example, like under TDR, the light color is showing single-family homes, and then in the AMI section, I get that, and then over on the by quantity, so is this strategy saying that it would produce, the most units would be produced would be single-family homes? Is that how I'm reading it?
Yeah, so for TDR, it would produce detached single-family and some multifamily. So the type is specified in line there with the by-type text. And then in terms of the affordability requirements, it would produce zero to 30 and 30 to 80 AMI with added affordability requirements and over 80% AMI, so 80 to 120 and 120 plus without affordability requirements. And then in terms of the quantity, would produce a medium to high, expected to produce medium to high.
Okay. Thank you.
John, go ahead.
First comment, the overall content and, I won't say layout, but the organization of materials I thought was excellent. It's really easy to read and digest. The production for PowerPoint makes it hard to read on small devices, I found out. So I don't know what the final published document's going to look like, but take that into consideration. Small point. I think my big point goes back to the very beginning, the introduction. The last paragraph of the introduction talks about update of the comprehensive plan. I think this part, or a couple paragraphs there, could be beefed up to inform the audience a lot more that essentially this plan is designed to inform and help us develop the updates for the comp plan. Maybe even from past discussions, there were some graphics of all of the elements of, that are going to go into the comp plan, including this one, just to give some context and help the reader understand that this is a toolbox. It's not exactly prescriptive. We'll get to that as we get into the comp plan and then the development regulation updates. And also that the city's not going to build housing, so that the city and development community partners such as our citizen constituents are going to have to take advantage of the tools that are presented in the comp plan and through the Housing Action Plan to try to meet this shortage of housing throughout our community. So, you know, there'd be a lot of questions about, well, can't you be a lot more specific? Well, or market economy, it's going to be hard to do that unless the city was building it itself. So really, this is the framework and the toolbox to make all of that happen. I'd like to see something to that effect described in the introduction, so it ties more tightly into the comp plan update. Thank you.
Okay, Sayed?
Okay, I'm going to start. I'm going to start on page five. Can somebody explain to me what is the definition of housing and job capacity?
I'm sorry, just trying to locate exactly, we're on page five, that, in what context that's mentioned?
Well, in a couple of places, they make reference to the capacity. So what is the, what is housing capacity? What is the definition of it? How did you calculate the capacity of the housing in the city?
I don't think we calculate the capacity of housing, but when we refer to it, we talk about basically land available to accommodate residential development.
And that capacity is calculated based on the existing land use and the zoning or projected or proposed change?
I think both, both of those things. So capacity can definitely be extended through the, through some of the strategies and actions proposed in the plan. So it's a combination of what's there right now plus what can be achieved through some of the strategies in the plan.
The re-
Sorry, I just wanted to add one thing. So the city did look at land capacity as part of our urban growth capacity study. And so that was a process that was led by King County. It followed the guidelines from King County that was very prescriptive around how we calculate land capacity for that specific study. So I'm wondering if maybe that's what you're referring to here? It probably came up in the needs assessment portion.
So when the reference made that by 2044, we need to build 2,100 dwelling units, is that related to capacity?
It is. So our urban growth capacity study, land capacity fed into the conversation around growth targets. And so there was a whole separate process that happened at the same time with the cities in King County to establish growth targets. We have several different presentations that we made to council on multiple occasions and that we'd be happy to send out to the Planning Commission, so that you can get more familiar with those numbers and how we arrived there.
So again, that 2,100 is based on the assumption that we don't change the land use and zoning?
It is based, yeah. So our land capacity is using our current zoning.
Current zoning. So if you change the zoning or you change the land use somehow, then this target, 2,100, will change, either go up or go down?
The target would stay the same, but our capacity would change. They're related, but they're separate.
So the 2,100 is target is not the capacity, then?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, let's talk about the population. The city population doubled, as you indicated in your document, from 2000 to 2020, but then the projected is only showing 6,000 in 20-something years in the future. Is that realistic? Where that number coming from? I mean, you know, in 10 years, we double the population, and we're saying that for another 20 years, we're only adding, what, 6,000 to 8,000?
So keep in mind that there are two different ways to look at that. One is, we did double the population in terms of the city's total overall population. However, a majority of that was accomplished through annexation. So it wasn't as if there were more housing units being built in the city. There were more housing units and therefore more residents brought into the city by way of annexation. So when you actually look at the actual rate growth, which I believe is what the consultant used to model this out, is looking at the rate of growth in the region and applying that to Sammamish, and I believe that's how they came up with that. I wasn't the one that put that number together, but being part of the conversation, I do believe that was the method that was used.
Yeah, that's correct. So for historic, we do mention that in the addendum, and I know that was a comment that we received previously, that when we talked about population increase, it does not exclude annexation, and that's quite a big part of that population growth that you're seeing. So, and in terms of the projected population change, so the number does come from looking at the official Office of Financial Management projections that are done for GMA planning and applying that rate of growth that's seen for King County. and applying that rate of growth that's seen for King County to Sammamish.
Let's move.
Sorry, go ahead.
Let's move to employment. On page 19, the employment projection that is shown is only 760 more people in the next 20 years will be added to the employment in the city? That's hard to believe, Mr. Chairman, that we have a population of 60,000 and we're saying that in the next 20 years, all we add in the 760 people would be added to the employment in the city?
So that is the city's employment target that was adopted by the city council through the growth management, growth target setting caucus process. It takes, it spans over several years. You first calculate job capacity in the city, and then you work with your regional counterparts in what's called a caucus group with King County, under the guidance of King County, to negotiate a target for job growth in the city. So the city has a limited capacity for job growth because of its limited commercial, office, mixed-use, and neighborhood business zoning. We do not have a lot of capacity for high numbers of jobs. In fact, the highest job growth that the city sees is in education and in teachers and in school-related employment because of the growth of schools that we have seen recently. So because the city does not have a lot of commercial area, we do not have a lot of capacity for job growth.
Let's move on to the inclusionary zoning. It looks like that one of the things that I see in here that the city, under the inclusionary zoning, give the option to either the developer to build some more housing, affordable housing, or give some monies in lieu of the fee. The question that I have, first of all, do we have the inclusionary zoning guidelines now? And if we do, what do you do with that funding that you're going to be, in the case that developer doesn't want to provide for affordable housing and use it in lieu of, what happens with that funding that becomes to the city? That becomes to the city for other uses?
I actually can jump in on that one. We do have inclusionary zoning identified in the Sammamish Town Center subarea. And it does, it gives the option for developers who are building less than 10 units, so a smaller project, to do, to pay into a fund. And what we would do with that payment is that we would probably use that with Arch and have Arch help us identify how that money could be spent to support affordable housing here in the city. To date, we have not received any funds from developers. They have actually built their affordable, required affordable housing units, our bonus units in the town center.
The next question, and I'm trying to find at which page was it, the report makes reference to the annexation area will add only 32 dwelling units. Is that all that we're getting from future annexation in the city?
I'm happy to answer that one. The city has very limited potential annexation areas that are listed currently in the city's comprehensive plan. Most of the potential annexation areas that are listed have been developed under King County Development Regulations and within King County. So annexation would largely be taking areas that are already developed at the density allowed by zoning. So there is very limited potential for future growth with annexation at this point in time.
And also, in the beginning of the presentation of staff tonight, I heard the reference to the relevant theme, but I didn't see any reference to the mobility and transportation and emerging technology in a transportation as a relevant theme. Do you know why?
I think that, as I mentioned, the relevant themes is what emerged from our housing needs assessment analysis as well as community outreach. So that's probably perhaps because that wasn't a major theme that was, that came out of the analysis and the outreach.
I do want to jump in here also and just point out that this, this being a Housing Action Plan is primarily related to tools and strategies and themes related to housing. This will be coupled up with, in response to Commissioner Bresko's prior comment, this will be coupled up with, as part of the comprehensive plan process, other discipline areas like transportation. And emerging technologies in transportation is definitely something that is going to be a point of conversation with development of all of the elements in the comprehensive plan. So keep in mind that the Housing Action Plan is really that, that analysis and recommendation that you would carry forward into development of your housing elements, your land use settlement, your transportation element, and many of the other components of a comprehensive plan that ultimately make up the city's plan for accommodating growth going forward into the future. So this is just one of the foundations of one of the pillars that ultimately will be part of the comprehensive plan. So remember that we're really at that foundational level. We're analyzing what the different strategies are that might be employed in the city going forward to see housing growth that is able to meet the needs of the community, but also, and most importantly, able to address state mandates and county mandates that are dictating to us the type of housing and the quantity of housing that we are required to provide.
Let's move on to the ADUs. The report, and I really appreciate the explanation that I see in the report as far as what are the things that we can do, ADUs. And I see series and I number them, policies and procedures, eliminating owner occupancy requirement, development, developing some pre-approved design plan and so forth, and then make reference to the possible tiny homes, cottage houses, and developing a housing repair program. Do we have any of these policies and procedures and guidelines in our system right now in the city, or these are all, would be new to the city? For instance, for instance, tiny house, do we have tiny house guidelines? Do we have cottage housing as a part of the city zoning requirements?
Yeah, so we do not have any zoning controls or specific policies related to tiny homes. We have in the past had a cottage housing pilot program that allowed for a limited number of projects. I believe that the Habitat for Humanity cottages were built under the cottage housing program, the pilot program. We do allow for accessory dwelling units. In fact, the state recently changed its requirements or its allowances, I guess, for accessory dwelling units, and we're in the process of updating our code to reflect those changes. These are areas of opportunity for us, which are why there are strategies that were elevated to a higher level of importance because we feel that these are areas where we could see changes made by policy and development regulations, zoning control, where it would facilitate and allow for infill of development into many of our single-family neighborhoods that would not be disruptive to the architectural character or the architectural type of housing that is within those neighborhoods. So tiny homes and cottage housing and accessory dwelling units are strategies that would fit within many of our existing zoning classifications across the city and would allow for that type of infill to occur, providing diverse housing types, more affordable housing options, and ultimately more housing units in the city to provide workforce housing, et cetera.
I would also like to just add to what David mentioned. We do have cottage housing standards in the town center, including density bonuses associated with those cottage housing units. Unfortunately, we haven't seen any built to date, but we do have those design standards and also bonus density associated with those to hopefully encourage that type of housing here soon.
I don't want to all the time to take all the questions.
Yeah, maybe we could, maybe we could do some others for a bit here. So I was just going to walk through the strategies one by one and kind of see what some of the highlighted questions might be. So let's start out with Transfer Development Rights, who has some burning questions or comments about TDRs. The one, maybe I'll jump in here, the one that I had was some language that I was curious what it means. It's underneath by quantity, and it's the very last of that paragraph under by quantity, under the little riser chart there. And it says, I'm just going to cut it, cut off partway through the sentence, it says, "Development using TDR credits would likely increase quickly to wide and unconstrained use." What does that mean?
Yeah, that's a, that's a great catch. I think we can, we can definitely revise the language here since it's not clear. But I will clarify that it specifically refers to the bullet point on the page before that would make it geographically unconstrained, which expands use of TDR beyond town center. So I think what we're trying to say here is that expanding the applicability of TDR geographically would probably allow for sort of a geographically unconstrained use, but we can definitely clarify the language there.
Okay, I think that would be a good idea.
Can I, can I add on to this, though, that currently our TDR program is narrow and constrained? So I think that this is actually something that's trying to project that the intent is for it to become more widely used and less constrained, right? Because, because currently, our TDR program is, I would call it dysfunctional.
Yeah, I think it's really just a perception and understanding of what it, what it means because in this community, particularly when you combine development and unconstrained in one sentence, and then you have a graphic up above that shows high quantity of housing. I mean, there will be people that will not get past that. So if we could just make it so that it's made a little more laser clear. Other TDR comments? Sayad, did you have any? Oh, sorry, Carrie.
No, I personally, I like the TDR, and I think that that's the way to go. It's, it looks like that's a creative way of solving some of the problem that we have with the housing in the city. Absolutely.
Carrie?
And so here with the TDRs, with, without affordability requirements, we think this would translate into a large number of single-family. I'm sorry, what's the next, what's next to the single-family in the graphic?
That is ADUs.
Oh, ADUs. Oh, okay. So for this plan, it would, that's the type of housing that would likely be produced the highest?
I think we're seeing, we would see attached, single-family and multifamily for TDRs.
I think it's, it's the reverse of what you're thinking. So the darker, the colors that are darker are the ones that are applicable. The colors that are lighter are the ones that are not. That makes sense.
And I think that's why, I really love this format, but I'm really struggling with the faded out. So I'm really, I'm.
Yeah. We can, we can definitely go back and consider ways to make this more clear without the shading. I see how that can be confusing.
Okay, so just to clarify, this, this strategy would be successful in producing medium to high, missing-middle housing and multifamily, but not a single-family and single-family ADUs?
Yeah, I think that's a, that's an error there in the text, maybe.
I do think, just to add to that, this one is a little different than the others. Maybe it could be important to be clear that there's kind of two paths. There's a fork in the road with this strategy, and that's why there's two pancake stacks there. One is, you know, what happens when you do TDRs without the affordability requirements, and one is when you do TDRs with the affordability requirements. And mostly the other ones don't have that. They just have the one outcome, forecasted outcome.
Yeah, so maybe to, to make it more clear, just taking that high light bar out of the quantity, if that's not supposed to match what is light elsewhere in the graphics.
Yeah, we noted that, so we'll, we'll think about ways to make this more clear.
Mr. Chair, do we have good examples of what the other jurisdictions they're doing as far as using TDR? Do we know, good or bad, cities that they have done that?
So Seattle, King County have TDR programs. There's a few examples included in our sample jurisdictions section here, but Bob, I see you've, I'm muted, so you wanted to chime in there?
Well, you were, Madalena, you provided some examples there. I know, we were, I was involved years ago with many counties and cities trying to create the programs. I know, I think in, up in Skagit County, they have a program that's, that's working. In many places, it's, it's difficult. The challenge is the complication of TDRs, and there's a lot of effort that goes into creating these programs, but it's, it's complicated. And so, and it depends on the demand, you know, the demand in the market needs to be high, and you need to have willing folks willing to try and do it and jump through, jump through the hoops. So a lot of things need to be right to make it work. So there are some examples where it's worked. There's a lot that simply just aren't working because it's so complicated. That's my impression anyways, based on my experience.
Do you think that there are ways to streamline the process and kind of make it easier so the TDR would work? No process?
Perhaps there's some things you could do, but I think the nature of the program, you need a seller and a buyer. That aspect won't change.
I'm going to jump in here, too, and I think reinforcing what Bob's saying, I think it's a lot about economics and what the value of a TDR is.
David had mentioned before he's having some internet connection issues.
I'm back. I apologize.
He cuts out, that's why.
When you try to join the meeting from Bora Bora, that can happen.
Right, I wish. But yeah, our, our experience has a lot to do with land economics and what the sale, what the sale price of a TDR is and the number of TDRs that are available, et cetera. So that's part of the program complication.
Can we move on to inclusionary zoning? Who has questions or comments about inclusionary zoning? Lassine?
Yes, there's a paragraph here that talks about ad requirements for commercial uses. I don't understand how the inclusionary zoning can, I mean, I really don't understand this paragraph, how it would work. If you can, you know, shed some light or explain how this would work for commercial uses.
Yes, so I think the language here, again, can be clarified. We're using commercial areas instead of commercial uses because we are actually referring at asking, so applying inclusionary zoning for both residential and commercial development. So the MHA program in Seattle has a requirement for both residential and commercial, commercial uses. So the idea would be that in Sammamish, it's, the program is currently limited to residential development only, so we would, this proposes to expand the program to apply to new commercial development as well that would require developers to either pay in the in-lug fee or provide affordable housing. I will say that in Seattle, what housing. I will say that in Seattle, what we've seen in the MHA program, and we're currently doing some analysis for that, looking at the in-lug fee, but there's definitely more developers choosing to pay the in-lug fee for, because they don't have an interest when they develop a commercial development to provide affordable housing. But that's, does that answer your question?
Yes, but what basically took me the wrong way was the commercial aspect of it, thinking like commercial businesses, but what you're, basically, it is specifically for residential use, for like mixed apartments or something like that, correct?
So it's like a developer that would, sorry, David, I didn't mean to interrupt you there. I was just gonna say that it's a developer that would choose to develop, for example, an office building in Sammamish, and they would be required to provide affordable housing as part of the IZ program.
So it's affordable housing, not affordable offices?
Correct, yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
There's also a bonus tool that could be used where if a mixed-use development, like say in the town center, or say in one of the commercial arenas, was, has a limit or a cap on the amount of commercial space that they're allowed to build as part of the development, there's a trade-off that can occur where you can allow them additional commercial square footage or space in their development. If they, in turn, build units, some of the housing units that are part of the development at deeper levels of affordability. So you could say, you know, if you build 0 to 30% AMI units, which is the lower-income group units, then you get an additional, you know, I don't know, X percentage of commercial space added on to your cap on the amount of commercial space you can have. So that helps pay for those deeper level of affordability units.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Okay, so I have one question on your paragraph on require units at deeper levels of affordability. In that, you had mentioned that there is a line there which says, would generate with, would generate units affordable to the lowest-income individuals and fulfill new GM. Can you define what lowest-income individuals are? Because all along, we're talking of AMIs and lower income, and then suddenly I see the superlative of lowest-income, and I could not put it into a number in my head.
Yeah, I'm happy to define that. I think in terms of the way HUD defines the level of affordability, and that's the Department of Commerce adopted ways of defining it in relation to AMIs. The 0 to 30% of AMI is considered extremely low income. 30% to 50% is considered low income. 50% to 80% is moderate income, and then above 80% would be high level, higher levels of income. And I think Jackie or Miriam, you had some numbers as well behind that. Those numbers, if it would help to kind of put that in dollars.
Yeah, Miriam, did you want me to share my screen? Let me just pull it up. We had shared this with the planning commission prior, but these are the income brackets based on the area median income. So when we talk about these percentages, this is what the income ranges look like. So we talk about 0 to 30%. We're talking about $40,380 annual income.
For a family of four.
For a family of four.
Yeah, great.
And I also wanna add here that these are for King County, because these are set by HUD, and they, they're geographic areas. Actually, this is the Seattle area, which covers King County and Snohomish County. So that, there's some implications there in terms of using this for the overall regional AMI for cities like Sammamish and other cities, which we know have higher median incomes than the region as a whole.
But when you say the lowest income, so just a follow-up question. I understand that Sammamish is different from some other parts of the county even. Let's not even go to Pierce, or even within the county. This is different than some parts of it. When you say lowest income, I should still consider it as an absolute, right? That $40,380 income for a family of four is still to be considered. That's the metric that I'm coming for, when you say that you wanna increase that value.
Yeah, so lowest income individuals, we would refer to 0 to 30 and 31 to 50, so that would be below $67,000.
So I can take that as an absolute when I'm doing this? I mean, I don't have to, I don't have to equate it to Sammamish. I can take that as an absolute value to say.
Yeah, so I think in our analysis for the housing needs assessment, we, this is, we do use the HUD income levels, so that applies to Sammamish, too, yes.
Thank you so much.
One quick thing I'd just comment for the commission is that if you take that little table, this was one of the things I did, is there's many calculators that you can use to say, okay, if this is my income level, how much house can I afford? And if you just spend about 10 or 15 minutes doing that and picking a bunch of different ones, because they all disagree, but they all kinda eventually come to a consensus about what that income level means in the current marketplace with some sort of basic parameters, current interest rates, 30-year fixed-rate mortgage, that sort of thing. That'll give you an idea of the house value we're talking about, which I think, you know, there's danger in that because there's a lot of variability, apartments and different configurations and so forth. But for those of us who are, you know, homeowners or have lived here for a while, seeing those numbers, understanding what that means in the city, it's a pretty stark way to view these categories. I just encourage you, you know, to think about spending a few minutes doing that. Okay, other comments or questions on inclusionary zoning? Sayed?
I wanna follow up with Wasim's question about inclusionary zoning. Do we have the inclusion zoning in our code right now?
Yes, we do, for the town center sub area, just for the town center sub area.
So we do have it for the town center area for new development?
Yes, for new development.
Let's look at hypothetical situation. We only have, what, total of four or five commercial zones? Let's pick up the Safeway Shopping Center. Is the guidelines right now is of course, basically, the zone is commercial, right? So if the inclusionary zoning would apply, then the owner of the complex can come on and actually take advantage of inclusionary zoning and put a residential into it? Is that what it is? Is that a possibility?
I think that would apply to new commercial development, so not existing commercial development.
I wanna jump in here, too, and say apartment condos on that property, it is by code. In fact, there is a large asphalt area that could be repurposed into condos, or, and I think what it would do is it would change it so that if they were to build apartments or condos or mixed-use development on that site, it would require a certain percentage of those units that are built to be in certain brackets of affordability, in ranges of affordability. So what this would do is it would provide some incentives and some other, you know, return on value back to them, but it would also require that they build a certain amount of affordable units at different levels of affordability with any development or redevelopment to those properties.
So.
Oh, sorry. I was just gonna add one more point, too. This tool, among other tools, can be used together to incentivize and to drive development to a certain area. So as David mentioned, and we'll use the Safeway example, you know, what are the tools that we can put in place to incentivize a current commercial owner to build those units? And so, you know, you could be looking at inclusionary zoning, you can be looking at development agreements, you could be looking at TDRs. So there, this gives you a menu of options to find that sweet spot to drive development to where it makes sense, and to do that with understanding what's going on in the market as well. So this is the first stop, and with the adoption of the Housing Action Plan, we can actually start investigating that a little further to see some results, so.
Thank you. Mike, go ahead.
I just, I think this is a clarification, but the opportunity around create transition area overlay, how does that actually increase housing? It feels like it makes, you know, more walkable, but how do we end up with more units by putting in that opportunity?
David, would you mind taking that question?
Sure. Yeah, creating a transition area overlay, say, for example, a quarter-mile around one of our existing commercial areas, or a piece of a mile, something walkable, would allow for that, those missing-middle housing types, the ones, if you look under units produced in the middle, to start to see more of those uses added. The transition area is itself subarea planning, or it's its own tool, it's its own strategy, but it does fit in with inclusionary zoning, because within a transition area, you would allow for increased density, infill density, to occur in different missing-middle housing types that would be walkable and might have lessened parking requirement. It might allow for, you know, added density in that area that is within the target proximity to where services and transportation and community amenities might be located. The other thing about a transition area, it can work in concert with a commercial core. So say you took the Pine Lake shopping area, the QFC, for example, and you were to draw a transition area around that at, say, a quarter-mile, you could then start to look for the relationship between the area in the transition area ring that's around the commercial core, and you could start to create inclusionary exchanges that occur, where if a developer builds a certain level of affordable units in the commercial core, in mid-rise or in apartment-style development, that you could then offer back additional density credits that they could carry back out into the transition area. This is a bit of an abstract topic that we're gonna be trying to create better materials through the comp plan process and through the land use and housing element developments, but it is one that we have identified as having a lot of potential. So stay tuned, there's gonna be more info on transition areas coming your way. But if you wanna talk, you know, about it at any time, feel free to reach out to me. It's a tool that's been used by many cities successfully to create different housing types, affordability, walkability, services, and to be able to efficiently plan for utilities, transit connections, and all of those things without disrupting or deconstructing single-family zoning and allowing single-family neighborhoods to remain largely intact in the way they are, but still accommodate growth and housing affordability.
Interesting. I'm glad I asked. And part of my takeaway from that, David, was that it would be used in conjunction with other tools and code changes. The overlay itself provides that boundary to work within with some of the other tools.
Correct, and that's a really important point, I think, that you just hit on, too, is that, think about these tools working together, and many of these are gonna be stacked. We're not, you know, some of these tools you could use on their own, sure, but the most power that you get out of these tools is when you stack them together and use them in collaboration with each other.
Okay, can we move on to development agreements? Does anyone have any comments or questions about the development agreement strategy? I had one, and I guess I'm not sure, can the, can the, it seems to me that development agreements are more of an opportunity-based thing right now. Could it be a tool that becomes a requirement for developments above a certain size or, you know, in certain zones or something like that? To me, the positive part about that is that the city would have a stronger voice right at the beginning to have some requirements upfront about discussing things like affordability, talking about incentives, that sort of thing. The downside is, if there's a lot of development going on, it can be a burden on staff time, and that could be a problem. But I, it still seems like if it's a good strategy, we should try to find a way to strengthen the way that it happens, or the frequency that it happens. Am I thinking about that the right way?
I think from our review of the RCW and the legislature, then development agreements are voluntary contractual agreements. So I, my understanding is that they, we wouldn't be able to impose requirements in terms of the type of development. But Bob, did you have anything to add?
Usually, in my experience, development agreements come along with another type of zoning permit, and they set things like phasing and, you know, what improvements the city might do versus the developer. But let me give you an example. I'm involved in a project with a developer in Everett. Everett has a provision where you can basically apply for a master plan and depart from certain things in code. And as part of getting this, they call it a planned development overlay. And so as part of the overlay, you need to, a development agreement is part of that requirement and really specifies what, in exchange for getting flexibility in code, like in this case, our applicant is looking for increased height and maybe reduced parking. So in exchange for that, the city needs to determine that the benefits are worth those changes. And so the development agreement sets forth what those benefits are. So it usually comes with another zoning permit type of activity. I don't know if that helps explain it.
Yeah, I think I understand that. The basic answer is, we couldn't really require it. So if we wanna make development agreements a strong tool, we need to find better ways to provide incentives to have people want to do it. So, got it. Sayed, go ahead.
Couple of questions on the planning development agreement. Do we have right now in the city, do we have guidelines as far as development agreement? And what is the threshold?
We do not have guidelines for development agreements in the city as part of our code. That would be something we'd look into. We have done one development agreement, to my knowledge, and that was just recently, and that was with STCA. And we followed the process through the RCW and WAC to guide that negotiation.
I do remember from the time that, for over 10 years I was working for City of Bothell, we had a development agreement that would apply mostly to the planned unit development. And by the way, I didn't see any reference to the PUDs.
Can you repeat the question?
Planned unit development.
Yes. Oh, was the question, you didn't see any reference to PUDs?
Right.
Is that correct? Okay. Anyone on the team on the screen wanna address that?
Sorry, what was the question?
PUD, planned unit development. There is no reference in the Housing Action Plan about that possibility.
I wouldn't be able to say if that was part of the initial list and it was excluded, but we can, I can look into that and get back to you on that.
And actually, I can jump in here. I do believe it. I'm gonna look to Evan behind me and David on the screen. I believe that's part of the Phase 3 Development Regulations work that's coming in '25. Did I get that right? I got it right, so '25. So we are looking into PUDs as part of future work item.
But you don't see any need to include that or reference to as part of the Housing Action Plan?
It was not included in the Housing Act. It was not included in the Housing Action Plan, no.
Do you see any need at least to make a reference to?
I am going to defer to our consultant team, but I think it, if I may, it didn't come up through the Housing Needs Assessment and through some of that early community engagement, so it wasn't identified as a theme. But it is something that we are looking at, working on here as a city. Anything else to add to that? Did I miss something?
Um, sorry, go ahead.
No, I was just going to suggest that this is something that we integrate into the matrix, and we can talk more with Elliot about and get a response together and back to the Planning Commission.
Thank you, Miriam.
Okay, let's, let's move on to missing middle zoning. Who has comments or questions about that? Maseen?
I don't have a comment. A person who's very new to all these technical terms, the term missing middle zoning seemed very odd to me. I know it's a technical term, but I do appreciate the graphic in the slide that made me understand it a little bit better. So thank you for doing that.
Others?
Ditto to Maseen, I had the same problem. I initially had the problem, why, why are we using the words "missing"? Can we find something else?
Yeah, I think that, I mean, I would say that's been a term that's used, been used for several years now, so there's probably some blind spot for a lot of us. It seems obvious what it is because we talk about it all the time, but maybe for others we should think about how to describe it.
Mark, or Chair Bothell, I was, I was wondering if I could take a step back for a minute about planning developments. And I was just looking through some notes previously. Planning developments fit into the inclusionary zoning category and the missing middle-friendly zoning category. Because planning developments are a form of a zoning control that could be designed to require or incentivize affordability through inclusionary requirements. If you do certain things, you get additional density bonuses, and that's considered to be an inclusionary requirement. Or it could be framed as missing middle-friendly zoning, where you're given some flexibility if you do a planned unit development, you could, and you build certain different types of housing within that planned unit development, that's considered to be missing middle-friendly. So because a planning development type of arrangement is a zoning control, it fits within those, and perhaps we should just make mention that PUDs are options within both of those categories.
Okay.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Asher.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a question on the by-quantity paragraph that you have over there, because I was struggling to understand a part of it, which was that you, you mentioned here that increase in new housing at the pace of the market. And then down below that, you go to larger multi-family projects, buffer and transition zone between commercial centers and low-density residential areas. So I was struggling to understand, are we saying that that would mean that when we are filling the missile, a missing middle zoning, we would end up creating more housing? That moves at the pace of the market? Because at this time, the pace of the market is where you're showing the AMI, 80 to 120%. Mark, and that goes contradictory to what we have before that. Wouldn't this exacerbate a problem that we've, we've been trying to solve? To say that we will build housing at the pace of the market? Or am I reading that wrong?
So I could jump in here. So the, recall that the Housing Action Plan is meant to address housing needs within the community, but it's also meant to address housing affordability and mandates from the state and the county. So this tool, more specifically, I think, addresses some of the themes that we picked up from survey work, from community forums, where we heard that we need different options for people to choose from. And those, those were not framed as deep affordability or affordable restricted units. They were more framed as different types of units that might fit into different price ranges by the simple nature that they're different sizes and different configurations. So these are those, right, these are those where we're talking about missing middle in the 80 to 120 is market-priced housing of various configurations that fit, that are not your typical single-family housing supply that we have seen built in the city.
Yeah, I think I would reiterate what David just mentioned, that this strategy focuses more on offering, diversifying the options and the type of housing available within the city, rather than addressing the housing affordability needs of lower-income households. So these units are typically more affordable to moderate-income households. So as we say here, above 80%, rather than the more traditional single-family housing units.
Okay, so I'm supposed to read on the, on the image that you have about that, on the units, under the units produced, and then equate that to this 80 to 120% and say that, okay, this is creating that, this one, because it's not doing it on the, on the left-hand side, which is the single-family home, so it's not, listen, I, naturally, I went to assume that, okay, somebody with 120% is going to come in and he's going to say, I want a housing which is at a particular height and pace that cannot be matched by people at a lower strata. And I thought that that was contradictory to what I was reading about that, but, before that. But what you're saying is that, read this along with the fact that we are doing the units produced, and that unit produced will go at the pace of the market and will be something that'll make it more affordable, because the pace of the market will make it go to the pace of affordability. Is that, is that a right way of reading it?
I'm not sure in terms of the pace of the market here, what was intended with this, but I think the way this should be read is that most of the units that will be produced here will be at the, will be the different missile, missing middle housing types, and they will be at 80 to 120 or 120 AMI.
Okay. I'm still a little fuzzy about it, so I'm going to go back and I'm going to read this and see how it lands on me, but this, and I'll bring this up in the Excel sheet if I, if I'm still not able to align with it.
Yeah.
But I have a feeling that this has an, this is a direct impact on worsening a problem that we're trying to solve. At least that sentence. So let, let me go back to that.
Yeah, we will revisit, revisit the wording there.
I think it may also be helpful, maybe. I'll just share an example. So, for example, some of the feedback that we're hearing are people in Sumameish who their children have grown up and moved away, are looking to downsize. However, we don't have the housing stock right now for them to downsize to a smaller home. So these people might be interested in, for example, cottage housing, which is a form of missing middle, or a townhome. But right now, we don't have a lot of options for them to move into. And so I think this is aiming to address that need among households that might not be, you know, in our lower-income housing brackets, but still interested in a different form of housing than we currently have. Does that help?
That's great. My only feedback on that is that all that we are talking about seems aspirational, and this suddenly seemed to be objective. And if you ask me which is the one that I'm, I fell off the chair, this was one place that I fell off the chair, because I was like, oh, why are we doing this thing? So we might want to look at the wording on that.
Okay.
Thank you, Chair.
Maybe I'll just do my one comment here on, on missing middle zoning. There's quite a bit of language in here talking about things that, having worked with the Planning Commission for a while now, we spent a lot of time on. And I guess I would just want to express caution that we did a lot of work to try to define some development requirements for housing to get restrictions around some of the undesirable developments that were occurring. And that's why we put in place some of these things like height limitations and floor-area ratio setbacks with some variability. And this sort of suggests, now going backwards on that, I guess I just would, I would ask that we be very cautious about how we proceed with this. I think missile, missing middle housing in the city is a, is a huge issue that would be great to do something about, you know, for both affordability and for folks who just want to be able to stay here. But I don't want to have it be misused, and this is a real opportunity for us to do something that has unintended consequences in the future. So not for today, but as we proceed, I want to keep a yellow flag on this one to be careful. Okay, Sayed, did you have some?
No, I have some questions from staff. What is the total number of dwelling units in the city overall, roughly?
That's a number we have, but I don't have it committed to memory, so we'd have to look that one up and report back to you.
I think it's in the range of 22,000, isn't it?
22,000?
Yeah.
And we're saying that in order to meet the target, we have to add 2,100, right? 2,100 additional unit of all different kinds of that?
Over 20 years.
I'm sorry?
Over 20, over 20 years.
Over 20 years. And, and how many of that 2,100, 2,200 over 20 years, how many is supposed to be affordable? What is the ratio?
14.
All of them.
All?
100%.
All the 2,100?
100%.
Because I didn't see a reference that says that, that's, that's what it is. It doesn't say if it is a target or the total. So right now, how many do we have of the 2,100? I'm trying to get an idea of how, are we even close to meeting the requirement for 2022, 2023, as far as affordable housing?
I believe that's, oh, sorry, go ahead, David. I apologize.
Oh, no, go ahead, Kelly.
I was just going to ask you, our Miriam, to clarify the 2,100 would be additional to what we have existing. Is that correct?
Yeah, I believe that, so the span for the growth target that we're looking at starts in 2019 and goes to 2044. So it would be looking, I guess, at this moment, it would be looking at anything that was built between 2019 and probably 2024, when we wrap all of this up. And the only things that I know about are, not currently built, but in the planning stage, that might include some inclusionary zoning requirements, but we would be looking just at, I think, a few units.
So out of that 22,000 unit Mr. Chairman brought up, how many are affordable right now?
We have the number, but we don't have it in front of us. We have to report back to you on that.
It is definitely more than zero. We do have affordable housing units here in the city, and as David said, we have that number, it's just not, we don't have it available right now.
Yeah. I can follow up tomorrow with an answer to the number of housing units we currently have, with the caveat that I'm looking at a 2019 dataset from the county, as well as the number of affordable units we currently have too.
I'm glad that brought up the question, because I didn't know the 2,100. I thought that's the total number of dwelling units that we need to add to meet the target. But now I hear that 2,100, 2,200 is all supposed to be affordable. You may want to kind of maybe make reference to it, that clarifies that in the report?
It is 2,100, just to be clear, the, the growth target for the city is 2,100 units. And we are about to receive, if the growth, the King County Growth Management Planning Council votes on it, they're, they're in the process of wrapping up their, their review, and they're about to pass off recommendation to the city, to the county council for, for final adoption of amendment to the King County, countywide planning policies that would distribute out our 2,100 units into the different income brackets of 0 to 30%, 30 to 50%, 50 to 80%, and 100 to 120%, and 120 and above. And within that, they have a direct mandate that we build a certain number of our 2,100 units within each of those ranges. And I, most of the units are clustered down in the 0 to 30% area median income, and the 30 to 50, and then there's a few more of them in the 50 to 80, but there are zero units, according to the current proposal by the county, in the 80% and above area median income categories. So this is a really important thing to remember, because this is a mandate from the state and from the county that we must demonstrate compliance with to get certification on our comprehensive plan. So there, you know, you'll, you'll hear comment from others about the, the need to look at other numbers and do further analysis on that. However, that's great, but at the end of the day, that doesn't change the fact that we are facing a direct mandate from the state and the county, and we must demonstrate compliance with that.
And we are not in compliance right now?
Well, we're working on compliance. They haven't, they haven't judged us as to whether or not we are in compliance or not as of yet.
So if the town center is fully developed, how many, how many affordable housings we're supposed to get from that project, including all phases of development?
That would be another number I'd have to follow up with you on. We can definitely provide that. I did want to follow up on your comment about acknowledging the 2,100 being all affordable. There is quite a discussion about the growth target and the affordability in the Housing Needs Assessment, which is attached to the Housing Action Plan that's in front of you tonight. So I would encourage reading that, that actually does go into all the scenarios that King County was considering at the time that we completed the Housing Needs Assessment. But there is a lot of really great information there.
Thank you. Maybe I'll just make the quick comment, appropriate or not, that I looked in my email here for a minute, and there was an email from Miriam earlier this year, I think, where she concluded a nice little table of existing affordable units in the community, and it's spread between 30% and 80% of AMI, and it also includes both owned and rented. But given those parameters, there's 116 on this particular table.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else on missing middle? Let's talk about partnerships, the next strategy. Anyone have comments or questions? I would say this one sort of didn't get much love for some probably good reasons. But I, you know, my one thought about this is that there's, feels like a really, a deep opportunity, if we can just figure out how to, to do it right. So I'd love to see this get some more thought and attention. Other comments? Carrie?
Yeah, I'm also concerned, because it does sound like one where it would take a lot of time to do, but also could have incredible impact. So taking the time to weigh impact versus time, and even if it's high time, that might be helpful. And, you know, one of the things I'd like to bring up is just sort of in, in the senior space, making the senior housing more affordable, looking at places that exist in the region that, that strive for affordable housing. There are some, and I think it's important to also include affordable senior housing. I know we're thinking about encouraging assisted living, but those are sort of at the higher end of the income bracket, so, thank you.
Go ahead, Mike.
Well, one, just a quick comment. It was interesting that this strategy and the subarea planning didn't have the graphics around the units produced. Is there a reason for that? I assume there is. What is it?
I think the partnership strategy was sort of intended to be more vague, there's, I should say, intended to be flexible. So the flexibility in this strategy is intentional, as this is suggesting the city being more proactive to figure out which partnerships would serve the city's interest. And depending on the partnerships that are identified, there's a lot of uncertainty around actually what amount of housing that would create. So I think the reason for not including that is that it would, it's difficult to assess what the outcomes would be, since there is not a lot of... um, what the outcomes would be since there is not a lot of, um, sort of meat to the bone.
That makes sense. It's, so just a quick comment. It might make sense just from the documentation standpoint to keep the format consistent and just make a note that it's highly variable and that's it. And then, well, I have the floor here. It actually surprised me because of that complexity to put partnerships together, that this would be a tier one versus a tier two. Uh, and unless it was like, oh, we should get started on these now because it's kind of a long lead time to get the right partners and negotiate and figure all this stuff out. But that was just more of a, you know, sequencing in the tiers. So maybe something to think about.
Ajay?
Yeah, I have one, um, suggestion. Do you, I, you might, you, speaking of vague, you might have had some idea of a comparable city that you would have seen as an example for partnerships and said that this is a great example that we should either look at or consider for the future, but it's not yet at a place where we can do this thing, the meat to the bone part of it. Uh, and that's why it might not have come here. If that's the case, do you have a city that you're looking at that we should look at to say that, okay, this is a great example of partnerships and they are similar to us? Or we're not even at that level?
I, I would say looking at Kirkland would be a good example. Kirkland has done a great job with partnerships. They actually have a recent, uh, housing dashboard that they pushed out. If you go to their website, you could see their, their dashboard. I also want to add that, that one of the reasons why partnerships are a tier one is because anytime you're getting into any deeper level of affordability, partnerships are part of every, of every one of the strategies that we see here. Um, so when we're talking about deeper levels of affordability that require covenants and management of units and, and to ensure that that level of affordability is sustained throughout transfer of ownership, we have to have partnerships with other not-for-profits or other organizations like Arch that can help us administer the covenants and ensure that that level of affordability is retained, um, as the units, um, progress through their, their lifecycle. Um, so one of the reasons why partnerships is a tier one is because partnerships are really, um, elemental to all of the other, um, strategies when you are talking about building at lowered levels or deeper levels of affordability.
I would also just add to that innovation as well. So, um, I've been part of groups where it was a partnership between a housing authority, the public health agency, and some nonprofits, and they got grants to build, uh, housing that was healthier for people who are struggling with asthma and other health disparities impacted by their environment. So that was a great example. Also, the city of Renton worked with a housing authority there, several housing authorities, um, as well as a bunch of nonprofits to redevelop an area there. Um, so I think there's some really exciting things you can do with partnerships. And as David was saying, it's also a way to target at the same time those lower AMI levels as well.
Got it. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll just build on that real quickly. So, uh, David, what you mentioned was actually really helpful, but as I've read through this and also being in prior conversations about the various strategies, I didn't fully appreciate how essential partnerships are, like kind of fundamental to being able to achieve the lower AMI targets that we have. And so that should probably get documented in a more like in-your-face kind of way. Like we have to figure out a way to, to work partnerships. And I was just rereading this, and it does say critical source of technical support, financial opportunities. It doesn't get quite to the, the, you know, it is elemental or fundamental to achieving the, the lower AMI. So just a, while I, I would probably forget that if I was to try to get that written down into the, the comment form, so.
Noted. Thank you.
Sayed, Sayed, oh, John, have you got something?
I do. So you highlighted Arch here, and obviously the city's been a member supporter of Arch for probably 20 years or more. But Arch and a lot of these regional coalitions, um, were created before the state mandate. So as city money would go into an Arch project, for example, might not land in the city. With the new dynamic of the required housing, when we fund something through Arch, are we getting commensurate value directly back that can be counted against our state mandate? And second, and I mentioned this to David some time ago, these, and it's been alluded to here a little bit, these regional partners can really help us in terms of managing and tracking the metrics of really complicated arrangements for low-income housing. That's it.
So to, to answer the first question, uh, there are current amendments to CPB that GMPC is considering that would, um, better recognize partnerships and the value, um, and attribute back the inputs that the individual members of partners are providing into that partnership arrangement. So it wouldn't necessarily account for units in the various affordable ranges unless it was built in the city. However, there is another method of accounting that the city, the county is looking at for reporting with regard to, um, your, your contribution to regional efforts and regional partnerships in achieving similar goals. So e- even if you didn't achieve all your, your units, they would still look at your contributions and that is a factor in their, their weighing, um, whether or not you're, you're at the point of reporting evaluation, like five years after adoption, we have to assess our success in implementing our comp plan. And one of the factors they will be looking at is, in addition to units created, is partnerships and contributions to partnerships.
Sayed, go ahead.
I can give you some examples, real examples of the partnership. A good example that you probably have seen it, or if you haven't, you can go and look at it, is Ashway Park and Ride Lot. It's a partnership between Sound Transit and I believe is the city of Linwood. I'm not sure if it's City Mill Creek or City of Linwood and the developer. They build initially as a park and ride lot, but then developer came and put a bunch of, I don't know how many, probably close to a thousand units. And anytime that you go through that area, you see that the parking lot is full of cars. Where these people, they go, they work in Seattle, they live really on the top of the park and ride in wherever the city is, Linwood. Another example that I was partly involved before leaving the city of Bothell, there was a Safi shopping center, dinky small Safi in downtown Bothell, that they closed down and the city took advantage and partnered with the Arch. And right now it's under construction. Affordable housing is real heart of the downtown Bothell. These are example of partnership. Partnerships are two types. One is a developer and then the other one with agencies. One agency that I think that seriously city should be looking at it is the Sound Transit and King County Metro. We do have a park and ride lot. There can be a good partnership between the city and these agencies to build affordable housing on the top of existing. And then the other developer, and the other one is upon the private side is a Arch. So these are examples of the partnership.
Could somebody move to extend? Let's do a half hour.
Motion. Take a second.
Did you? Oh, it's been moved in second, and then we extend by a half hour. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those no. Thank you. Let's, uh, move on to tier two. Um, I'm going to say in tier two, there's kind of two themes here. One is the, um, minimum density and land use mix. And the other is, um, really something we've touched on already a bit, which is ADUs, tiny homes and cottage housing, so different housing types. So maybe I would suggest in both interest of time and because of the relationship of some of these things, let's try to have comments around kind of all of this tier two stuff put together so we can, uh, get ourselves out of here at a reasonable time this evening. Okay? Um, so who would like to jump in on these tier two strategies? I will just make a couple of comments. I thought that the minimum density, it was an interesting suggestion. I think in the future it'd be interesting to know if there's ever been an example of where somebody is underdeveloped in the city of Sammamish in recent times because I don't, it seems like it would be super uncommon. So I'm just not sure if the strategy will be that helpful.
We do have an example, or like developing under maximum density or minimum?
Yeah, so if we say that the, the minimum density is X, and then we enforce that, that means we're trying to develop more housing on a parcel, make sure that if it's zoned as R8, I don't know, whatever, or 12, that actually gets used that way rather than underdeveloping it by only putting in single-family homes. But it seems to me that my perception in Sammamish is that that doesn't really happen. People build as much as they possibly can on parcels that they have zoned as they are. So I, I'm, I wasn't sure how this would actually help very much in Sammamish. And that may be a look at the, you know, history and see if there is any examples or not. Beyond that, I think we, you know, we cover the kind of different housing types, um, quite a bit. The one thing I wondered is with cottage housing, a lot of people talk about cottage housing. We've seen some great examples that people always bring up of, and, and I mean, I look at the nice pictures and I think, yeah, heck, I'd love to, my kids are out of the house. I'd love to think about, you know, doing that. I wonder if it could be its own, uh, kind of a zone situation where we could provide an incentive to people to develop cottage housing if they make some of it affordable. So in the end, we'd get, we'd get some cottage housing. Some of it would be market rate, some of it would be affordable, but maybe that's allowed to be developed on a parcel that otherwise might not, you know, reach that level of zoning. Uh, it just feels like there's an opportunity there somewhere to create an incentive, to create some cottage housing.
So, so interesting you say that. One of the tools that we discussed to kind of at, at great length as part of this process are some of the rezoning processes, and there's a rezoning process called a contract rezone process. Um, and you could, you could set up the code so that it allows for, um, a, a contract rezone for cottages, um, and that there are certain criteria that you have to meet. And then it would allow you, if you had, say, a site that was larger than a half an acre or, you know, something like that, that was big enough, a, an assemblage of properties that you could, um, that you could pursue a contract rezone that would then deliver a, a certain product, kind of like a planning to development even. You know, you could do a contract rezone planning to development. I see Bob's got his hand up. He's probably done some of these before.
I was just going to say that many cities just simply allow cottage housing developments by right in single-family zones. And there's standards that go with them. So sort of like the town center zone allows cottage housing. Um, and generally because cottage units, cottages are small, they're actually often more expensive on a square foot basis than a larger home because they're small and there's more skin around them. And because they're small, you know, why is a developer going to build a small, expensive unit when they could just build a big one and make more money? So they need, uh, they need incentives. So usually the incentive is you get to build two or even three cottages for every regular single-family unit to make them workable. So, uh, most of the, you know, we've written a lot of these for a lot of cities and, and the best thing is not to make it conditional, just make it a permitted use in the district, um, and have, have good standards for them, um, and, and allow for two or three to be built for every single-family unit. Otherwise, they're not going to be built. So that's kind of, kind of the best practice, I think, or if you want, truly want cottage housing.
Great. Okay, thanks. Other people that have comments or questions on tier two? Sayed, go ahead.
Question about cottage housing, how the challenge is going to be, what are you going to, what are you going to do as far as the parking requirements? Because effectively you add in another unit, even though that unit is going to be smaller. But how are we going to deal with the parking?
Bob, do you have any thoughts?
I was, I was looking for my notes here when I, um, when I examined that. Give me a second. Oh, um, you know, parking, um, I, I don't, in my notes, I don't have what the town center requires. Often some of the, some of the older cottage housing standards required one and a half spaces per unit. Um, you know, usually, and actually with, I remember with the town center plan, I worked on that, um, and we did tours of some of the cottage housing developments, and one of them in Redmond. And, you know, a lot of the cottage housing owners are typically singles or empty nesters. And, um, so kind of the trend that we've been, been using is, is to reduce it down to one space, uh, makes cottage housing a little bit more viable. And when you have, uh, you know, but a lot of the current, uh, provisions are a space and a half, and it, and it makes it more difficult to pencil, uh, to find the space for the parking and add it in. Um, but given the, the types of folks, given the size of cottages and the types of folks who have them, I think it's reasonable to usually have one space minimum and let the market kind of dictate what they want to do.
This is one space in addition to what that unit has?
No, I'm just saying the requirement for when you do a cottage housing ordinance, you know, you've, or, um, if you do cottage housing development, um, uh, I'm guessing the current rule is one and a half spaces, uh, parking per unit. So if you've got six cottages, you would need nine parking spaces. Uh, what I'm saying is if you want to encourage, better encourage cottage housing, you probably need to reduce that requirement down to about 1.0 parking spaces per unit. So requiring six spaces rather than nine would better encourage more cottage housing.
But that is for the new development. I'm talking about what happens if somebody wants to add, uh, to add one and a half unit and call it cottage housing to the existing?
Well, if you're adding to a cottage housing development, you would have to meet the, the standards. I don't know if I'm following your question.
Let's say that I have a house and I wanted to add another unit, a small unit to the existing structure, to existing housing.
Oh, that's, so that's be a different housing type. The cottage housing usually you require at least four. Yeah, cottage housing, usually you, you require at least four cottages for it to be called a cottage housing development. Cause usually a cottage housing development are clusters of small units around an open space. So if you're just doing one, it's more like an accessory dwelling unit. Yes, so that's what's on the screen there now.
If it is to existing, that's, that's retrofit.
That's an, that, what you're implying is, is either a separate unit or it's a accessory dwelling unit. So it's a different, um, zoning term than a cottage housing unit.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, let's move on to tier three. There's just a couple of strategies in here. The housing, what I would call preservation program, and then the sub area planning. Who has questions or comments about either of these? John, go ahead.
So the housing repair modification preservation program obviously could be quite expensive and the narrative here alludes to partnering with nonprofits to, um, to provide those. And I know that there's already a program available in, in the city to do that. I know that Bellevue has a very robust, probably very expensive program, um, but are there possible grants from HUD or others for sustaining such program, um, whether it's run by the city or other parties? So I think it's a great idea in preserving our, our housing stock. So that's the extent of my comments.
Sayed?
What would be the advantage of creating sub areas as far as addressing housing needs?
Um, I think that's, oh, um, I, I will just say a quick thing. I, I think sub area planning has a lot of potential. There are examples outside of. There are examples outside of, within the, on the east, east side that have resulted in, in, in quite a lot of residential development. But I think I'll let Bob take this one.
Sure, I think with both shopping centers, so kind of like the city did some town center, did some sub-area planning with that. The shopping centers are probably one of the best opportunities in the city to really add, you know, a lot more units in a place where they're appropriate, where you've got a mixture of uses. And that's pretty much what's happening in, in other east side and suburbs all around Seattle. Because those big shopping centers, particularly as brick and mortar uses are becoming more challenging, those have become sort of the land bank for potential new housing and also creating more kind of an urban village atmosphere and pedestrian oriented development. So by doing sub-area planning, it allows the community to kind of look at the, kind of at the full needs, to look at what the, the vision might be, you know, how, if it's, if these areas are restructured, you know, how, how tall the buildings go? What's the character? How do we deal with transportation, stormwater, environmental conditions? So really, when you're, right now, you've, you've got, your zoning is kind of, it's been around for a bit and it only allows, I, I think the, when I looked at it, it was like only up to like 18 units per acre, which is very, very low density for kind of a mixed-use developments, mixed-use developments that are like four, five or six stories are easily over 100 units per acre. So when you're looking at changing, other cities have gone through sub-area planning to really study what the needs and opportunities are and to help formulate new zoning and design standards, and also look at some of the facilities needs that, to help mitigate the impacts of some of the larger development, make it happen. So that's clearly, I mean, I, after doing the town center plan, it was clear that, you know, those are obvious next future steps for Sammamish was probably to do sub-area planning for, for those two shopping centers at some point.
So that gives the sub-area the opportunity to create and define zoning different than the other sub-areas?
Sure, that's part of it. And, and that's where things like the inclusionary zoning, because things like inclusionary zoning work really good when you're upzoning property. And so this is where, because the zoning capacity is so low right now, if you're upzoning it, the, you know, that's where it makes a lot of sense to add requirements for affordable housing, because the, otherwise the property owners are getting a big, you know, they're getting a lot more that they can work with suddenly in capacity and density and maybe even building heights and those things. So that's when inclusionary housing works really well in those types of situations.
Thank you.
So I think they comment that I think sub-area planning is kind of a stealthy, a little relegated to the last on the list here. But I actually think that it's the most substantial, significant opportunity for the city over the next 20 years to comply with what we need to comply with, do the right thing for providing diverse housing and at the same time preserve the, I think we've been told not to use the word character, but I still like it, so you, the character of the neighborhoods that we have. I really am excited to see what will happen with this topic. And I think it, it deserves, you know, a little bit more highlighting than to be the last on the list. It's definitely the future of the city, is my opinion. Okay, last but not least, monitoring. There was a little bit of a description here of monitoring this stuff in the future. Oh, sorry, Wassim, go ahead.
That's all right. So I have one question with regard to the housing repair modification, specifically with regard to the preservation program. One of the things that is, to my knowledge, that is driving, would drive people out of the city is the ever-increasing property taxes, especially this year, what, 25%? So the aging community, as they age and their prices, their, their houses actually age and it needs more repair, we're adding on them more property taxes. Is property taxes could be used or leveraged as part of that financial burden that can support them in repairing their homes and things like that? So just a thought.
I thought, I thought that there was a reference in one of those guidelines that provides some incentives. Can somebody make a comment on that? I, I read somewhere, that's one of the strategies. But that was on, I don't know, that was for repair?
Yeah, maybe I'll come in. I know in the past, and I can't tell you when, we've discussed this exact topic and that there is a, I believe it's a county program to provide assistance and property tax relief for elderly folks that meet certain financial criteria. I couldn't tell you anything more than that comment right there. I would also just encourage folks to remember that the city's portion of the property tax that people pay is quite small. So the, the extent to which the city could actually influence that is, is, you know, probably a bit of a challenge, because most of your property tax, when you look at where it goes to, is really not the city. There's a chunk, but a lot of it goes to other places, state, school district, and so forth. Okay, anything else? Carrie, go ahead.
Can I just make a, kind of a request? Is, now that we have these strategies, there was some public comment tonight about meeting with the public once again. Is there an opportunity? You know, I think some of the most effective open houses that I've done here in the city come to are like the Park and Ride way back, where we came in and, and could see the boards. And then also, one of the parks also had boards in here and there were post-it notes. Is there any opportunity, or, you know, I have to answer tonight, but could we consider doing one more outreach in person? Put these strategies on the board and ask people to envision and, and put up post-it notes on things that they, where they envision themselves in 10 to 20 years or as property owners, where they could get excited about in the next 10 to 20 years, potentially taking advantage of some of these strategies? Thank you.
I think that's, that's probably something that the city and our team can discuss. I would have to refer to our scope of work and the, but it's certainly something we can consider and discuss with, with city staff.
I'm gonna add to that. I think as part of moving the hap along, to bring this to city council here in the coming months, we would want to stay to schedule, but I think we do have a really great opportunity and I don't want to give too much away, because I'm gonna actually report on that with the director's report here shortly, is that we're really gonna be talking about housing alternatives and that relationship to the land use scenario. So I think there is an opportunity to look at engagement opportunities as we're looking at our land use scenarios and discussing our housing element under the comprehensive plan. So I think that's a great idea. I just ask that we do that under the comprehensive plan, once these housing strategies are adopted by city council.
I hear what you're saying, Kelly, and I, I know that makes sense. So I do think it would be helpful, and I'm thinking about like public comment and all. A couple of times, we talked about how these strategies kind of interplay or the opportunities, how a planned unit development might play off of a couple of strategies or how we'll use, you know, sub-areas and the commercials with rezon and all of this. So something to consider, and I don't know if this fits the scope or anything. I know it would help me a lot, is to say, okay, here's a couple of these scenarios and how these strategies come together and what would be actually solutions, not the tools to build the solutions. And I think then we could really have a lot more robust, you know, comments about what impact this would have and what it would look like and so forth. So just food for thought. And then to kind of circle back, I think that the way that the strategies have been listed and described and having been through the presentations before, this was great. Like it really helped to clarify, and it would have been wonderful if I've had those like a month or two ago when we're reviewing each of the strategies and making comments on them earlier. But, but this was a really nice way of pulling the strategies together. It still needs something to get it into like, okay, how is this going to get implemented? And what would that start to look like? Because individually, they don't necessarily add up, right? So food for thought.
I think as you start to explore the different land use scenarios for the comp plan, that will all start to come together. And maybe one of the things we can do with our consultant who's overseeing that work is to highlight, they already reviewed this document, but to ask them to integrate these strategies as they're talking about the different land use scenarios so that you can see that full picture.
Oh Jay, did you have something else?
Yes, in, in sub-area planning, there was one thing where I saw the impervious uses. I was very happy to see impervious use, but I was sad that it is part, it is part of additional planning alignment. And it's not called out as an opportunity, because it could really improve quality of life when we use that better. Is there a reason that has gone into additional planning and is not an opportunity that we are looking at? Or it's just, it's just, it just fell there?
I, I don't think that there's a particular reason. I think it just, just fell there.
Okay. I, I would really encourage that we should consider that, because impervious surface use would, would improve quality of life no matter what. So it's a, it's a great place, it's, and like Mr. Chair, you said, sub-area planning is important. And we could do something really impactful with that and improve across the board.
Okay, thank you.
Just as we wrap this up, anything on the monitoring portion of it? So the one comment is, I love it. What gets monitored gets done, you know, that's the old saying. I would be curious to know if we're doing more or less than other cities. And the reason is because I presume that we will be monitored from the outside and I would want to not share more than necessary. Yeah, just a food for thought. Okay, anything else from the commission? All right, I wanted to say that I really appreciate Madalena and Bob for hanging with us here and Kelly here in the room and Miriam and Jackie and David as well. This is really a lot of content. I think that the presentation is great. I made the, joked with somebody earlier that the way it's formatted makes me think it should be made into a coffee table book. So I'll be looking forward to getting my version of that with a fancy cover on it. But this is great work and I really appreciate it. And I encourage the commission to remember that that matrix is still there, that if you have other comments or questions, you can go ahead and post them. Anything else on this topic?
So what is next?
Great, thanks, everybody. Kelly, you've mentioned it, but let's move on and do your director's report.
Okay, well, good evening, Planning Commission. Kelly Hildy, your Deputy Director of Community Development. I am here tonight to provide you an update on two really important projects. The 2024 Comprehensive Plan Periodic Update, as well as the Climate Action Plan. So let's go ahead and start with the Comprehensive Plan Periodic Update. So the city is making steady progress on three major initiatives as part of the Comprehensive Plan Update. These include finalizing the vision statement and defining the scope of work for the Comprehensive Plan, establishing guiding principles to inform the city's discussions on land use alternatives, and evaluating potential land use alternatives that align with the state and county requirements, as well as community goals. On March 7th, staff will be presenting the guiding principles and potential land use tools to the city council. These tools will be instrumental in shaping the development of land use alternatives. On March 21st, the final draft of the Comprehensive Plan Vision Statement, scope of work and associated resolutions will be presented to city council for approval. We're really looking forward to this phase of the project. As you all know, we've done a lot of work on that community visioning. On April 6th, we will be back to the Planning Commission and we will be presenting the land use alternatives, as well as different options the city may take to accommodate new housing requirements. So this really is in alignment with what we just ended on with the last presentation, so there is more to come. And then lastly, on May 6th, a discussion with the Planning Commission will continue on land use, including exploring housing alternatives that are appropriate for the identified land use scenarios. Now on to the Climate Action Plan. Just a couple weeks ago, the city council directed the city manager to allocate funding to expand the scope on the Climate Action Plan. The work included in the scope includes a literature review of neighboring cities' climate action plans to identify community-oriented actions that may be applied to Sammamish. The review will include findings from King County's 2015 Consumption-Based Greenhouse Gas Inventory, which measures goods and services consumed with the, with the community. Also in the scope, scope of work, we'll be working with our new, hopefully soon-to-be-hired National Resources and Sustainability Coordinator and the climate, and sorry, and the Community Advisory Group to further tailor community-oriented actions identified in the literature review. Also, the scope includes creating a community-oriented chapter for the Climate Action Plan to highlight the role citizens can play in addressing climate change within the community. And lastly, the additional scope of work includes an implementation and accountability matrix to support the city in implementing measures identified in the Climate Action Plan and tracking progress towards K4C and other, and any other identified environmental goals. Next week, staff, next Tuesday, staff, or sorry, in two weeks, staff will present a proposal to city council to identify Climate Action Plan greenhouse gas and vehicle miles traveled reduction goals. Staff will also propose activating the Community Advisory Group to begin working on providing guidance and input on the development of the Climate Action Plan. So that's in a couple weeks. And on May 4th, we will be back here with the Planning Commission to review the greenhouse gas and vehicle miles traveled reduction strategies, which will be incorporated and adopted as part of the Climate Action Plan. So we have a lot of work coming your way. It's all very exciting. And if you have any questions or would like to further discuss, I encourage you to reach out to myself or Evan and we'll put you in touch with the appropriate staff person. So thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Director Hildy. All right, let's move on to public comment for this evening. Who would like to go first on agenda, public comment? Okay. So let's extend 15 minutes. Yeah, who would like to do that?
Make a motion to extend to 9:15?
I'll second. It's been moved to second to extend to 9:15. In favor, say aye. Aye. Pose no. Thank you. Mary, go ahead.
Hi, Mary Victor, Sammamish. Excellent questions. Very thoroughly read the material and you understand it. I would like to say that, like Director, Deputy Director Hildy had said, it really is like a menu, like when you go to a restaurant, sometimes you just go and you just order a burger. Sometimes you have soup and salad. Sometimes you have the salad with entree and you don't have dessert. Sometimes you have them all. Sometimes you add Bernays on top of your vegetables or whatever. I think that's what all the housing strategy are, whether they're tier one, two, three, or four. And partnerships certainly are important, so I'm glad for the questions Mr. Bresko asked on that, or Commissioner Bresko had asked on that. Just to kind of work backwards with the questions that you've had, I believe- Just to kind of work backwards with the questions that you've had, I believe that there is a sub-area plan in Redmond. I haven't looked it up for a number of years, but it's kind of on the slopes or down in the area, and it's like just different things they do for those types. I know in Kirkland on, when you kind of, when you're going out from Redmond to Kirkland on 132nd Avenue or Street there, I think it's Avenue, there's something called the Kirkland Bungalows. It's got like a gazebo with the bus stop right there. It's kind of got a curving path that's the main road. The stormwater is green. It's kind of got a ditch that you go to, and the little bungalow houses are all very cute looking. They're about 1,500 square feet each. They have an upstairs, downstairs. They've got one car garage and a pad where you can park the second car. UPS bus drivers deliver there and things like that. And then just up the road toward Kirkland more, there is a cottages thing that was done in Redmond. It was very nicely done. I believe it was done with a partnership to be able to get some. They have very expensive ones, they have very cheap ones or more, less expensive ones. And the houses sit around, they've got a central area there next to the trail, they've got a second play area. The garages are done where they kind of look like barns, and then instead of horses going in, they're horsepower vehicles that go in and out. But it's, it's a really nice, so it is a private area, so you have to, I think, be invited to go in there. But there are things that exist that we can look at. And then to answer the missing middle and why it's called that, it's actually called middle housing. And where it came from is like after World War II, suburbs started. So everybody who used to live downtown, they moved out and they have the big single-family home. Well, when you're paying for all those extra roads and streets and extra water and sewer, it's too expensive. So suburbia actually is breaking us and also hurting the finances to the city. So the way that you do it is you group things more back together in a mixed-use center, which Chair Baughman had talked about. So the reason it's called missing middle is those stop, the missing, the houses that were in the middle housing stopped getting built about 1940, 50. There's a guy, Daniel Paralek, that wrote a book called The Missing Middle Housing. There's a design by Opticos Design that is available online, and there's lots of videos on it, and you can listen about it. So what we need are, we don't need more large, single-family homes. We have too many of those in our city. If you go to the water district meetings or here, about 85% to 87% of our city is single-family homes, and a lot of them are large. We do have some older homes. And you guys have got that, somebody has an older home, is going to pay higher taxes, and they're going to want to fix it up. But you also have older home areas that we don't want the people to just sell, have that house ripped down and have a McMansion put in. You want to put zoning controls and land use so that they can be fixed up, they can maybe be extended a little bit, but really, they're not going to become bigger giant things than they are. So I think that's important. So I was going to talk on TDRs for a minute, transfer of development rights. There is something in the city, it was to buy so many, you could buy up to 75 of them outside, 22 have been bought, 20 of them have to be used before anything else can be used, and they're only for erosion hazard area in the city. They're not including landslide or other areas. So it is a program, but it's kind of broken or not functional because it needs changes to it, which is why I'm glad it's the first thing listed in it. And the one thing that really aggravates me is in 2016, there was a roundtable on growth that the city held, and they had a map of Sammamish, and they had the blue vacant lots. And you, just looking at it, you could say, you know, about like 85, 90% of it is white, so it's developed, and the blue part was about 10 to 15%. So for land area, we only have about that 10 to 15% left. And if you look at that, you're like, well, the first 10 or 15% you develop of the city, you can kind of do whatever you want, and then you kind of want more structure. But when you're down to the final part, you really want to think about what you're doing. So that's what we're doing. And on that, and on that, whenever they do, Said's questions, we're really good about, is it land capacity? You know, is it based on the current zoning? Yes. Is the land capacity based on the current zoning? And they do that numbers for that, and Sammamish Plateau Water and also in this city. But when you look at it, like along where like Sammamish is, kind of where it goes from 30-foot elevation up to 500-feet elevation at the top of Plateau, there's a landslide hazard area, erosion hazard, no disturbance, all the critical areas which are part of the comp plan and things that are required to do. You're not supposed to be building in those areas, but what's happened is like where Inglewood is, which is a platform 1889, which is when Washington was a territory, and Tamarack where I live, which has over 200 lots, you're building in those areas. And what really aggravates me is the city gets to count that for growth, but we're private roads, so they never pay for them. They didn't have any stormwater regulations, so we get stuck with the growth, but it shouldn't be there in a lot of the cases, and we don't want those houses to get bigger than they are. So the reason you need TDRs in city is those areas that really shouldn't be developing, and the easy lots have all been built. But there are hard lots to build. People own it, they want their money, and they, you know, do a reasonable use exception and build something, and a lot of them try, and they foreclose or struggle. So we want to be able to do a transfer of development right to put those somewhere, somewhere undeveloped, someone's ADU, or probably in town center where they should be developed. The other thing, beauty about TDRs is when you do that, then you get centers that develop, they're more fiscally efficient. Town center, we put a lot of money to put those roundabouts in, put the water in the sewer there, and I believe we got a $5 million grant to do it as well. They need to go there, and the more that you stack them up, then you have more, it impacts climate less because your building emissions are less. You have a lot less things that happen because you've got smaller stacked units together. So I think the TDRs are really important, and I only got 17 seconds left, but there's just so many things that you're talking about, that the consultants are good, the questions are good. We really need to be doing things to change housing, to make things better, and trying not to hurt the character, but with sub-area plans and partnerships and everything all the way through, try to take the density that we can have that makes sense to make our city better so we have jobs and places people can live. Thank you.
Thanks, Mary.
Paul Stickney, Sammamish. Good job, Mary, on all your comments. I echo everything that you said. I'm going to start with a few round-robin comments here on things heard tonight. Excellent comments from everyone, good staff presentation, that is a well-laid-out report. A few odds and ends. On the matrix in the packet, on most other major planning efforts, citizen comments that have been received in writing and discussions have been put into those matrix, so would suggest a lot of the thoughts that have come in over the four to five meetings on this be included there for discussion. Inclusionary zoning on town center from 2008, that started in 2011 when the development rates were finished, is a 10%. But I've always argued that at the same time, the city could have done inclusionary zoning on single-family housing plats, and then we'd have over 300 more affordable housing units. On ADUs, I like them as a real estate agent, but I have some questions in Sammamish. My questions are about impervious surface and stormwater, traffic, and trees, especially on the ones that are detached. And ADUs in homes, two-story homes are almost the hardest to have a separate ADU, a rambler with a daylight basement, two-story with a basement, tri-level splits, yes, but Sammamish has more two stories than most houses. So not throwing any cold water, just be aware of that. Annexations was talked about. Kohani annexed about 4,000 homes into our city in 2016, and then there were about 500 homes in three other plats added in about 2009, so roughly 4,500 housing units and approximately 12,000 people. On theme three, I believe, that was shown by the consultants, there was the term, you know, and I stutter some for some of you that don't know, there was the term, you know, demographic. I think we should add economic segments to that. We need to include all economic segments and all the demographic groups in that category in the city. Affordable housing, 55 homes built in Sammamish since incorporation, 80 in the, in the pipeline now. And interestingly enough, affordable houses planned, targeted, but not mandated in the first comprehensive plan from 2003 to 15, asked for, for 76 a year, which would have been about 988. And in our second comprehensive plan from 2000, it was adopted in October of 15, it, from 2016 until '22, had a target of 92 per year, or 644. So Sammamish has had a target of over 1,600 and has built 55. Not being negative, but we have to figure out how these actually get done. Back in the 1960s, there was a rock and roll band, The Doors. They had several good songs. One was Light My Fire. It's time for the community to get excited about the ability to do cycle of life, lifetime housing, to stay in the community with holistic enrichments and light a fire in the community that is positive. Another song they had, Break On Through. They had, most people think growth is negative no matter what. What we have to discuss is there are many types of growth that are net positive and not negative. That's another discussion. And The Doors had another song that was interesting, Five to One, it was called. There were lots of reasons that they did that back in the 60s, but what I want to talk about in Sammamish is our three topics of 85 to 15. 85% of the houses built of our 22,500 were allowed by King County, and 15% by our city. Another 85/15 is a little over 85% of the houses in Sammamish are detached, single-family, and 15% one or more units. And another 85/15, roughly 85% of households earn over 100% AMI in Sammamish, and 15% less. These things matter. One-seventh of our households internally make less than 80% AMI, and six-sevenths make over. Now, let's go to another commercial from the 80s. Wendy's, Where's the Beef? What I'm asking is where's the internal numbers? This whole plan and everything has got a ton of external number work. Great, and, and we do have to do that. But Sammamish has missed the boat for analyzing internal housing supplies, economic, demographic, and workforce internally. Some work that we did back in 2015, based on 2010 numbers, based on partial information, showed internal needs for all economic and demographic groups between 4,000 and 16,000 above what was zoned at the time. We've never said that that many should be built here. What we have talked about is adding about 8,000 housing units, which would be very small, senior, multifamily, mostly in, in centers. And we've talked about decreasing large-capacity, single-family houses, which has happened. I intend to reach out to most of you and discuss this, but I think it's time to face what's the way to get excited about adding a modest amount of different and diverse housing in centers, nowhere near what our peer cities have, not even close, nowhere near the numbers, just larger than we currently have zoned. Let's gather the data, let's get the facts, let's analyze consequences, let's get enlightened opinions, and talk about coming together with the right mix of housing that meets internal needs that have never been planned for in 20 years in Sammamish. We have a long history ahead of us. It's our legacy to leave the right mix of housing, and that's my comment tonight. Thank you.
Thanks, Paul. Almost forgotten what it was like to see you in the reel. Julian, do we have anybody on the call?
We have no comment online.
Great, thanks. Anything else from staff this evening? No? Could somebody please move to adjourn? It's been moved in second that we adjourn. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose, no. Thank you, everyone. Have a wonderful evening. I would tell you to look at your calendar and buckle up, we got a lot more coming. Thanks, everybody.
This truly is Disneyland with an ice cream.